All right, we're live. We're recording. All right, one time is five thirty-eight. Late for night start. It's, uh, we do have to start the firm bluff, usually district board director's special meeting. This time I'll note that Director Barnes, Smith, and Co. have seen our presence. One more vacancy currently. Sitting. Would you like to lead us?
I'm here in the United States of America. This is a report which says my name is under this. We're going to test.
All right, tonight we will, uh, interview guys for our board vacancy, but before we do that, we've got a couple of other, a couple of other items to attend to. When we get there, uh, some communications on the agenda. Do we have anyone who can speak with us? No? All right, here we go. Uh, consent agenda for approval of previous minutes and for, uh, and transfer operations expensive. That's a pay request and change orders, customer type write-offs. Do we have anything, anything we can throw in with the agenda?
Uh, no. Consent agenda, I will be able to have the minutes for you, um, to organize.
All right, let's talk. Okay. I won't be moving unless I have a vote from my director. No. All right. I have a motion to adjourn for. Motion to present agenda by Director Marty Second, by Smith, all in favor? Chair Swaro. Let's get it approved. Let's go out of order. Uh, item number seven, store damage cleanup. Have records or anything we need to adjust.
I just want to bring all kind of, uh, today, longer we are, we have finished, um, all of the mud, proper, if you will, uh, rebuilds, trail areas, et cetera. We did finish that. We did not do anything, um, along that Harry Man, Rush Creek Regional Trail area down there. That, that is going to be a big project and I really do think we need to look at that, look at the rest of this bridge project, um, finishing those two areas, um, at the intersection. So, um.
I actually didn't get a call from this.
Whoa.
It's a shocker.
Um, we will have to do some cleanup in that area once Williamson County finishes in that, in that intersection area. Um, we're going to want to force our side on, we have an ADA trail comes down from Great Oaks down to hit the regional trail. We'll have some opportunity to do some work there. But the area that I'm specifically talking about is our farm bluff. There is a very large bluff down there that is just full of those mangy hair furs. And we get, obviously, a lot of scrub trees, vines and everything that have kind of taken over that area. Williamson County has come in and done a partial cleanup. I don't know if I said it right. Partial cleanup along Harry Man. Didn't really affect us per se, uh, because ours is farther back on the trail. This would be the perfect opportunity to do this because they will be closing down Harry Man to do some additional work. And they'll be doing it, uh, closing it during the week, opening it back up on the weekend. So if something the board wants to do, to clean up our mangy stake down there, this would be a really good time for the board to consider. Uh, it would be helpful not having all of the route traffic with the heavy equipment and everything we have down there. It's estimated it'll cost, it'll take a minimum of thirty days. I hate to even say that, uh, because it could be longer depending on, um, just how thick some of those areas are. Um, we've done very little cleanup over the last couple of years in that area. We've done some prior, but because the Harry Man widening was occurring and the Great Oaks, uh, bridge project has been there. But we're behind on trying to clean up that area down there. Um, the street company has done an extraordinary job. I'm getting accolades now from our residents, um, thanking us and really, uh, complimenting the work that has been done on every building and trails. So I just want the board to think about this. If you are comfortable doing the not to exceed, we would see how far we could get with the not to exceed and then come, of course, come back. Um, same way we did on this project, um, depending on how long it's going to take. We have the funds, our budget is excellent here, um, predominantly because we have a property, some of the projects we wanted to do, um, as far as the parks and such.
This is going to take a minimum of thirty days. If you do not exceed, I guess, there, we're going to get the amount we don't do now.
Um, we will. The last not to exceed, you know, been seventy thousand dollars and that was right at twenty-two days. So we, we could continue to do the exact same thing again and see how far we get with that twenty-two days.
We got a more powerful, if it should be a.
If, if, it's going to be far more than that, if it's more than a change order. I mean, honestly, as I've looked at, we all know what the proposal constraints are. Um, I also know that during a situation like this, with the ice storm, with the damage, with the fire hazard, with all of those things, we can go outside without getting into legal trouble. Correct? Exactly. We are perfectly fine with that. This, this isn't, um, an improvement project. This is a maintenance project. So I just want them to know, we have the opportunity, we have the, the, I think, the perfect company to do it. And it's kind of a perfect time if they're going to be closing the roadway during the week. There, yes, it was supposed to start last week, but I think things got shifted a couple of weeks because of the, the bridge project. But it's going to start in June and they're expecting it to last through September. And it's closing Harry Man, uh, Monday through Fridays.
And if we do this, then we'll let our guys through there.
We absolutely can get our guys through there. And it's far safer for them. We all, we all drive Harry Man, you know? I had not, my eyes closed.
I'll, I'll make a motion, uh, to give our general manager, do not exceed orders thirty thousand dollars for permanent park spaces and exit cleanup of material there, um, near the intersection of Harry Man Road and the Great Oaks.
The fur and our firm bluff.
And the firm bluff.
That's right. I do want to make one clarification. I'm not exactly sure what Williamson County will be doing at the actual intersection. Um, and in my opinion, we wait until they finish what their preferences are going to be and then we add to that. But from the back area, you see what I'm saying? The back area up to the Two Jacks, Laffey Lane area is, that's going to be on us.
That's more than the top of the bluff?
That's right. And we cannot, I don't want to say any, you know. We can't clean the top of the bluff. There's just, there's not enough space. There's equipment in there. I'm afraid we will have some residents that are going to want us to come up to the top of the bluff and clean all of that, but we flat just can't.
Exactly.
We don't, that's right, and I don't even know. I'm trying to, I don't even know how we could do that. At the same time, we're going to have city culture.
Or what do we have?
No, I, I, um, we will also have some residents that lack the privacy, you know, that they're not going to want. But there will be some expectation that we, you know, do more than what, what our plan is. And I'm, I'm perfectly willing to talk to them.
I can talk to you in some of the new conversations.
Exactly, but we, we can't get off by the top of the bluff. There's just not enough space between the back of people's property line and, and the bluff is just, it's not beautiful.
Yeah. All right, most of my directors have to, and also, second by Director Smith, the further discussion.
Yes. Jenny, um, I, in the back of my mind, I'm remembering that they agreed to do some work where we, um, gave them some of the property. So was it up to the trail or?
It's that corner.
Just the corner.
Okay, so that's, that's north. It's the south.
And they put a sidewalk there, right?
They've already put that ADA sidewalk there. So it's really from about five feet on the opposite side of the sidewalk, across the sidewalk down to the actual roadway. So Williamson County will be improving that.
Okay.
Um, I don't, I haven't seen the plans yet, so I, I don't really know, but they'll be doing all of that.
What's your, uh, reading to see?
Yeah. That's a good strategy.
I, I, I think that's best for us because they haven't really finished the opposite corner of the under, under braking parking there. Um, you know, that's going to be lit and everything, uh, for those that want to use or access the trail there at Great Oaks. There's going to be nice parking down there. Um, and I know they're planning on some landscaping that I would be able to do. What a little bit of space there is with the car break-in. I just, let's compliment what they're going to do, a really serious sound. It's pretty messy down there.
We'll get a better vacuum.
Absolutely.
This is a good part, so, like, if we use additional line, a lot bigger than we just made. We have something, you have a better idea of how.
I, I think, I think that's a very good.
I agree with you.
I think that's probably the way to go. But our namesake, that bluff down there is absolutely beautiful. It's just covered up. There you go.
Yeah. All right, um, another discussion, all in favor of the motion? Chair Swaro. You got your marching order?
I have my marching order.
All right, so agenda item number six, I'm going to have the new directors fill our board's vacancy. So, uh, previous practice has been to, um, solicit folks to apply, which we've done here, and to read the republic, which is kind of new tonight. Um, I, I, I think, so af- after the interviews, simply the board meets executives, gets a session and discuss it, and then folks after the next session. So that's what we plan to do tonight. Um, so our, our two remaining applicants are Richard Horton and Ken Walsh. So, uh, what we've done in the past, we, we've asked for the folks who are not being interviewed at the time to, uh, step out of the room so as not to interview you. It's a request, um, while we interview one candidate and then the others. Uh, having said that, let's get to it. Is there anything else? All right, let's get to it. So the first of the last, and then actually we first, it's more reverse, I'll bet. Well, thank you for your share of the night, Professor. Well, thank you for your share of the night, Professor.
Appreciate it. Thank you for all you do, appreciate you all.
Much appreciated. Uh, do you have the opening word? What do you have to say?
I just wanted to give you some background. I just, um, completed my second time of being on the Williamson County, uh, bond committee for roads and parks. So, uh, really have good knowledge of how things work at a county level. Uh, we actually did interviews with, uh, pretty much every city in the Williamson County area. Found out what their needs were and then as a group, um, just determined a list of priorities which, uh, then got, um, evaluated by the new commissioners. So, uh, have that experience and then also have a lot of, uh, experience having friend for office, um, doing a lot of research around water usage. I know that's, I, I would say our top priorities are roads, water, parks. Uh, so I know the water aspect is always critical and especially when we have climate change and higher temperatures, we need to look at to ensure that the water, you know, ensuring that we're doing that wisely. Um, and then the third thing is, I know we've had in the past, you know, like, a lot of discussion relative to the neighborhood and how things should be. Um, so I just really, myself, would take a very common sense approach, uh, make sure that we're listening to the residents and getting inputs and, uh, you know, working, uh, with the community.
To do that, uh, or tell anything specific for, uh, Ken Walsh this time? Uh, I have a question. Can you give me kind of all of our directors' ponder? Um, as you know, the, uh, the mud is in, um, city of Round Rock's ETJ. Uh, do you have any thoughts about, um, Round Rock, ever attempting to annex, uh, annex the mud?
I, I really feel like, I've lived here twenty-six, twenty-eight years. Um, honestly, I think things really work well here. It's actually my hope that that doesn't occur. I mean, we have beautiful parks, like when, you know, my, my water bill, everything's done on time, very well, you know, um, and there's been times where I had the coot moment or whatever, and my office was like, there's money. So, so there's an aspect of the community I think that we have and we have a benefit of, of having the mud. Um, so I actually think, uh, you know, the, the tax rate is very reasonable living in the, this area. Um, so I honestly, uh, you know, I love the city of Round Rock. I mean, there's certain advantages. Um, I just finished Round Rock Police Academy, you know, just having, although I'm also, um, going to the police academy for the sheriffs, you know, so I mean, there's certain things that you can get Round Rock PD versus sheriffs, which I think both are excellent organizations. But honestly, I think, um, the, the areas of things that I think the board would need to look at is expansion of the number of homes that are being built. We just, uh, Salt's Ranch is at the other, it's on the other side. We have the new homes over towards HDB. So I think there's an aspect of growth that I, what I've observed is the, my board has handled that very well. So I think honestly, I think, I prefer that remain as it is because I think we have, you know, a neighborhood and so I think that my board, you know, we would lose that neighborhood aspect if it was to be incorporated into the Round Rock.
Um, additional question, um, as you, as you know, uh, a lot of the neighborhoods in the mud, firm lot neighborhood, um, the mud is responsible for the, uh, forcing the de-construction of the government. Um, and that's something that, uh, in the, must already do under the water go, and shoot it up for a number of years. I mean, previous to the time, I've been, well, previous to the time, well, uh, what kind of philosophy do you have as far as, um, how mud should force the de-construction?
Right, so I'll, I'll talk about things that, you know, go well, the things that haven't gone well. I think, uh, honestly, it was pretty inflammatory when there was this thing about, I think it was the ten thousand dollar fine, um, and whatnot. So I think the aspect of communication is good, number one. Uh, number two, getting clear guidelines. Um, I know the firm bluff having, and we were going to try and get the firm bluff aspect revised, I was on a committee and then everybody dropped off it, which was unfortunate. Um, so I think, I mean, clear communication, clear guidelines. Honestly, the, the regulations in firm bluff are not well-written. Um, so it would be great to see if we can pursue getting those a little bit more clear. Um, and I think too encouraging, you know, if there's a major decision, one of the things I like about the mud is that you all, there's like, for example, vandalism in the park, there's an email that goes out, or trash day items or decided to concern. You all are very good about emails, uh, and sending that out to the community. So I think that type of communication would be extremely beneficial. I will say I did learn, you know, from the process of observing your observations and one thing I know, uh, many of you mentioned was, you know, if you just go over to Cat Hollow or Round Rock West, it really doesn't look that good. It was pretty, um, not, not good. And I have to say, based on the comments, I did start noticing like, okay, this is, you know, like when you have the Little House in Curry thing going on, maybe it's not such a great look. Although I am a fan of, uh, trusting and, you know, you know, figuring out a way that we do that with the reason, of course. So I think there's an aspect of, um, communication. I think there's an aspect of, we, 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 we miss it, um, the guidelines that are written, right? Because they're absolutely ghastly because, um, and I think Jake was on the architectural committee, like he was one of the members of this committee. Um, so I think it would be very tough, very clear guidelines, um, in existence. So, um, we were, I think, I just went back to something wrong. And I was, yeah, I think, as I was saying, he didn't handle the bluff well, and I was pretty, um, short, short. Um, so, you know, so I think also I have that viewpoint where, you know, having been on the end row of the community would have happened. Um, I am one that wants to work with people, which is why I'm sitting here. Um, so I think that's a great question.
Uh, one other question for you, for Director. I'm really intrigued by your Round Rock Police decisions that you kind of made. Tell us about your takeaways from that, plus some matches to take.
Right, so I, I, I would say, um, I'm very much into, um, ensuring that, you know, everybody gets the same treatment per the law, um, and whatnot. So I would say I was absolutely shocked in a really good way at how well this run. And I believe honestly, Brown Rock PD could be a model for the nation. Uh, Chief Banks, number one, he hires, he's personally involved in hiring at every person, whether it's a janitor in the building or whatever, police officers. Every, uh, unit, I'm used to business units, but every unit within the police Brown Rock PD presented. Um, and I would say I'm not sort of like a fan of like, oh, you know, police officers should have SWAT and this and that. But let me tell you, um, they, they have like an armored car and they literally like, I would say at least three times a year have the event where they're getting shot at and literally. Uh, the Tuesday where we were doing the highs, like the, um, not the SWAT department, but the people that do all the negotiations, they literally had an incident that day where a person was firing upon them and then just run by. And then came and taught the class and I was, you know, so I would say at the end of the day, um, from the top of the organization all the way down, um, they care about people. Oh, the other thing is they made us go into a building like you're some of the shooting addicts, of course I thought, because I'm like, yeah. Um, but what they said is like, our priority is the people in the building in that situation first. Like if we have to run by one of our coworkers or assistants and a resident who's, you know, injured, we have to go in there and neutralize the situation. So, um, having talked to, like, every discipline, I guess is what you would call it, I was absolutely impressed in a very good way. Um, and you could see that the leadership, it just comes from the top down. And one of the things is they do way more training than other agencies, um, especially in de-escalation. They also make their officers work out and everybody has to pass a physical exam once a year, even Chief Banks. So they pay them to work out and you could definitely see the difference. So I, I am going to take the class for the sheriff's office now that I've taken this one. But I highly recommend it. You will just learn so much about resources and, um, you know, it's very proud to be part of Round Rock Community.
All the directors, any questions for Ms. Walsh?
You, um, captured one of mine. I was going to ask how you felt about even towards that, on that, towards that. Uh, I, I'd like you to clarify what you mean by, um, the guidelines being better.
I, do you mean the, the, around the, the firm bluff ones are very unclear? Um, they were written in nineteen, twenty, uh, no, it was like nineteen, nineteen eighty-nine.
Like, so actually, I think they were written in nineteen eighty-six, so I, I found a neighborhood and they were copied.
Right, right. So I, I honestly think we can do it where it's a little more, um, current. Um, I'll give an example, like, what is it, car covers? Like, I, I don't want to be a Round Rock West or a Rush Creek, but, you know, like, one of the points, um, building actually means like, you can't fit a car, you know, like a big truck, you can't fit in the garages that were built in these houses. So, um, so I think we can't, you know, um, I'm in, I'm a contracts manager, uh, so I renegotiate contracts both on the customer side as well as supplier side. I also am a manager in a corporation. And the thing, you know, the thing that keeps you successful is clear communication. Um, the document, I am a legal person and I read it and I was like redlining the heck out of it because it goes around and around in circles. It's not enforceable the way it's written. Um, you know, so, uh, it, yeah, it would be great to have something that people, you know, bought into, but also was very understandable. Because at the end of the day, to write a good contract, first of all, like, when I negotiate, I basically say, okay, we're all, uh, you know, we're going to put together something that everybody is comfortable with and, you know, is mutually beneficial. Number two is understandable. So when we all win the Lotto, which I'm planning on playing, that whoever's left behind can understand it. And that those jurisdictions do not do that. I mean, I'm happy to send you my red line because frankly, it's a terribly written document and I have twenty-five years of contracts experience in oil and gas, aviation, tag. Um, I'm sure there's more, but yeah.
That, that's kind of what I thought you meant. Um, and we understand your frustration on this board, but we also don't have the ability to modify it.
Right, yes, yes.
Rebrand it. So it's not really something that could happen. That would have to be the neighborhood generated, is my understanding.
Yes, the residents would have to stop. And it's, it's, it's pretty tough, but you're right, it is very frustrating. And I think that puts you all, you know, like, I admit, I was pretty hot under the collar on some of the stuff that occurred. But I also feel like you guys were kind of caught in the middle because you're, you have this terrible written document and then you're trying to do the right thing and you're, you know, and also you're one that everybody sees and, you know, has, you know, has expectations on and stuff.
Yeah, that doesn't work, I mean, we're all, we're all broken, so we can't have very close to each other.
I could actually, I mean, I could send you a red line. I actually have it on my laptop. It's terrible. Like, I could be like, here's the end of the beauty and, you know, this is what's making me have logic, because it's just not well-written. It's just, um, yeah, again, keep it simple and, but again, it takes the residents, but, you know, I mean, that could be yours and be like, yeah, probably yours. Yes, and you're kind of stuck in the hard, hard place. And I think, you know, I appreciate the conversation and the questions, you know, and at the end of the day, communication is really key to, and I show up because I care, so.
So let me ask you this real quick. Um, well, first question, so are you aware that if appointed as a director, you might have to be re-elected and?
Yes, yes, this is actually an interim type of thing, yes. Well, it's not, like, I didn't win an election to, this is because there was a vacancy, so that when the term comes up, then yes, then I would have to run for election or something. We have, and everyone was elected, so, yeah.
Uh, now, kind of piggybacking off of some of the things you already said, uh, so what, what is it that if appointed to the board, you would like to see? You already said something about more communication.
Right.
What is something, what are some other things you would like to see for being a part of more for the mud? And what is something you would like to see less of?
Right. Um, for me, I mean, I think overall, you can always tell things are going well because there really is, you don't see a lot wrong. Like, for example, you know, you go to the parks, they're gorgeous. You come here, it's gorgeous. Like, if I have an event, that's very well done. So to everybody's credit, right now, things are going really well. I think what I can bring to the table is number one, I, um, I, I am a number, first of all, I'm a nerd, my country roads, I've been to the bond committee twice and parks. Um, so I'm a policy nerd, so I'm really good at reading laws and whatnot. Number two, I'm a finance person, so not so much looking for changes, but what I can bring to the table, I manage FIPM, I manage eleven finance employees and I manage a commissions budget of over eight hundred million dollars. And, um, you had it to accruals and then to actuals, and so my, my numbers were within three percent, which, uh, for eight hundred and whatever, one million dollars is, is, um, really good. Uh, and then also I'm a procurement person, um, I have several years of that, so, you know, hopefully I would be able to leverage, you know, some of those instruments of, you know, helping me write our fees. Um, so I'm looking more as a servant, I think honestly, again, if you, things are going well and nobody's complaining, you're like, okay, there's no problem. But it would be nice, uh, one area is the hypergrowth, it would be nice to assist on that because I, having just been on the bond committee, I mean, we were, you know, we're looking at, okay, Samsung is coming in and so here's this traffic effect over here. And we talked to Chief Banks and, you know, he had his input, there's just all these moving parts and you all have those moving parts as well. You work with the county, you work with Round Rock, you know, I'm sure you work with these other entities, so, you know, just be able to, um, assist with all of that. You work with the county, you work for Brown Rock, you know, I'm sure you work with these other entities. So, you know, just being able to, um, assist with all of that.
I had a question, Matt.
Yes. Yes. Um, so I actually worked for IBM, so that was eleven years, Dell Computers. Um, at Southwest Airlines, I was a contractor, but they ended up, um, they had, um, their IT department was, uh, their resources was non-existent. So I literally was a project manager for a, um, a state of the art thing where people, they do something on an aircraft or in a station, you get it back. And I literally, it was like a college-based program. We set up a warehouse. Um, so I ended up getting, even though I was a, as a contractor, I had a lot of responsibility. I actually negotiated the cashless cabinet. So every time you get your credit card swipe for a health college beverage. Uh, okay, it's a new program now, but I did that back in twenty-ten. Uh, it's just oil and gas. I was also a contractor, but I also had a lot of, um, responsibility. Um, I, I think they had me doing like a contract audit and then I kept finding mistakes. So they're like, okay, we'll let you be in charge of this stuff. I ended up getting into things like tank farm management, inventory of fuel. So, um, but, um, stand currently, Gitterbit is, um, a permanent employee sale point. So, uh, actually the state of Texas, that was as a permanent employee, so I was managing Capgemini, Gemini contract and then Xerox, um, contract. And that was for all of the IT resources, uh, all of the data centers for twenty-eight state agencies. I personally managed audits, uh, responses for twenty-eight state agencies, including IRS ten seventy-five, a lot of IT stack. And so I, you know, personally was co-managing all of those audit responses.
Oh, I have a question for you all, if you don't mind. Uh, what kind of, I manage the insurance policies for my companies. I wanted to find out what type of insurance you have for the board members and how that works because, um, there's, there's no insurance.
So we do directors and officers. So do you all have something similar to that?
Yes, chapter forty-nine, this is one of the most important ones, uh, requires directors to take out a, to the government on their execution of their duties as directors. So that would be something that your name is personally assigned to, although, um, we have a ten dollar R B, right, Jamie? Uh, and, um, so they actually have a flying in bond for all directors. And so my virtual qualified as a director, uh, who actually did everything, uh, but they may have a job in Korea as well.
Okay. And then are there, is there any, like, I know you can't get into details, is there any pending location that's, you know, that's assigned? Sorry, I'm in, I'm here. No, no, uh, I, yeah, I'm actually managing all the directors, officers, insurance for my company as well as all the cyber and other issues.
Good, there's Dino policies.
Okay, so you have a Dino, okay.
Do you don't perceive any, um, current conflicts right now? If you were to, you need to be appointed director, would you, your first job in a long year?
No, I'm really not. I, uh, I've been dealing with a lot of family matters. My sister-in-law just died of cancer. My mom's in a nursing home. So I haven't really been doing a lot of other volunteer stuff. Um, my job is, um, in California, uh, I work from home, so, um, it's a software company, so. In fact, they actually California law that you're not allowed to like fire people, either by province or, um, you know, do this type of activities.
Check your list.
Oh, no, we have to take a class actually, like, uh, literally like, uh, because California laws are so strict. Um, yeah, so I found out you can't, which is kind of interesting. You can't get fired for running the office, which, um, fascinating. Well, just want to say thank you for your time and I appreciate everything you do for the community.
Thank you for your interest. Um, we will go to the executive session after. We hope to come out and vote and have a decision tonight.
Really appreciate it.
If you want to say, that's fine. If you don't, that's fine.
So, thank you for your, thank you for your time.
Mr. Hart, welcome.
Hi, perfect, just unsolicited, just nice.
Thank you for your, uh, interest in me working. Appreciate you throwing your attention, right?
Absolutely. You're most welcome. Today, you're what, twenty, eighteen years? And, uh, I've never been really active in community before I moved here. That's something about the state of my neighbors and something inside there really on, from the kind of best spirit of community, uh, hanging in. I struck up, uh, a lot of people to give back, uh, and do that kind of lead example, I choose one also. I'm sure I look for an opportunity, uh, hopefully, you know, you all, I'm glad I have to say or whatever, uh, to continue, uh. What, what can I add? What, what, what questions can I ask, right?
So your main interest, I guess, is you mentioned already, um, it's wanting to get back to communities and your main interest in, in your love of the neighborhood.
Sure, yeah. So I live actually in this writer, my markers. Uh, I served on the Southern Canyon Board of Directors for eight years, five and then three years of various capacities, president, vice president. I don't think I, well, yeah, second, I think I did all of them. But yes, uh, you know, it's rewarding to, you know, have the feeling that you're on the time and I tell you that you don't know. Uh, to, to, you know, know you're doing something different, you're writing business, uh, taking care of things. It, it warms my heart every time I hear, uh, Janey's, you know, speaking up something else, you know, the, the firm blood for, uh, you know, this, this community is always giving me the impression of, uh, high value and preservation of resources and appearance. And, uh, kind of being one of, as, as we humans scourge the earth with our being, carrying things up and reshaping things to our own needs. At least, uh, I, I've always felt from this community that there is still, well, yeah, but this is the right way to do it. Uh, on the Southern Canyon Board, I was involved in, I don't know, many conversations, just as, just as there were many as well. Uh, got, brought in to how things are, you know, re-sculpted, sidewalks here and green belts. Uh, Janey and I were at the meeting where they first talked about, well, creep print is coming through this like two thousand seven. And we were standing on the plaza outside City Hall, talking with, uh, Norm Maxwell about, you know, you can't just shove this road down our throats with the two lane road coming out here six twenty. And those conversations, that kind of drove a rewording thing to make sure that this was more than just, before they started doing that. But, you know, that's, that is internally a feeling of value, speaking up for not just me, my neighbors, really know what's happening. Yeah, it's just being able to contribute and in all those different ways. Uh, I, I know there's, uh, we've got three distinct communities with different personalities in the district. Southern Canyon, what they remember, what, uh, they all have kind of different, uh, feature sets and styles. Uh, and I feel good, I pretty good understand for how those align, uh, into a lot of these meetings. I'm talking about, you know, um, the director dedicating to the different parts of the neighborhood. Uh, sorry, good parts of the city, excuse me, but my, uh, Southern Canyon Lego keeps coming back to my, uh, reflex. Uh, but, you know, the importance of maintain, maintaining, uh, you know, poles and those, uh, firm blood neighborhood, this, uh, tennis courts are, uh, are, are, are due to right. Uh, due to the green belts we all share, uh, and interacting with the county as they work on these projects. Like, uh, intersection down here, that's great, I can't even remember, but I just hear a number of those conversations with, uh, with the commissioners, uh, commissioners, uh, engineers. So for my degree reason, civil engineering, uh, I, I have a, I've worked as a surveyor right out of high school, I have to go to college. And, uh, you know, so roadway's interesting to me. My specialty is paving. Uh, if it was my hobby, I'd work, I'd work for Dell. So I got, got my hobby, like if I was a dream, right? Yeah, so I feel like I've got a lot to offer, uh, to, to the district, uh, with those, uh, skill sets and experiences, uh, across the board. So, yeah, got a whole, a little bit of that. Um, is that two minutes or less?
Sorry, I'll get more than that. So as you bear in mind, I know, um, firm blood is in the city of Brown Rock, uh, it is possible for the city to, you know, to also do procedures. How would you, how would you feel about if there were options from Brown Rock and a certain firm blood?
So, uh, well, I usually wouldn't use it and use it, uh, at least when I left in two thousand five, the four years were rolling over. The next day we went out, uh, again, this is a strong, uh, annexation is not necessarily a bad thing. It's also not necessarily a good thing. It kind of depends on, uh, on, I don't know, the being conscious of, you know, how much better you acquire, how much better you have. And what's, what's really, and what's the impact to the services by, are getting better services or getting new services by the new, uh, the annexance. Uh, and, uh, every conversation I've put, pushed back at her in Harris County, uh, you know, my, our, my small department. Uh, you know, Houston has terrible problems and those problems will allow with, uh, with the, uh, as they dilute our services. Uh, so, yeah. To that point, not least necessarily a bad thing, but it's not necessarily a good thing. Every proposal, uh, change like that, you have to weigh out the odds or you have to weigh out the cost benefits. What's happening to the services, what's happening, you know, where are we getting, where are we, I know we're getting a water problem, is there a change in, you know, our tax rate, is there a change in, uh, police coverage, your sheriff coverage, fire coverage? We've been, you know, getting our car service, you know, Rush Creek, getting the rest of the air from here, what has, how's that changed? How's that affect the, uh, the tax base for the community as well? I also know that there is a lot of, uh, the, the firm blood is a big pill for annexation, annexation to keep it, to swallow, uh, fiskin speaking. So I, I, I don't know what happens. Uh, Brown Rock has grown so much outward in urban areas. It's gotta be surprising to see those, those last remaining fuels get filled up in Georgia County, which is why, it's just like, I guess, it's been a long time to be able to. Uh, but yeah, the, the short answer is, well, what do you, what do you got?
One of the things that might be possible for, you know, we have three communities, three state communities, three, uh, two of them have their own H O A. One firm blood community that's not a H O A, it's a current obligation, but to enforce the leadership of the company. Some kind of philosophy you have as far as, but.
So on the Southern Canyon Board, you know, being responsible is one of our responsibilities also. And we actually, in fact, I get overflow complaints from, uh, Southern Canyon residents, you know, firm blood, you know, these residents want to drive their responses. Are you guys doing that, 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 that much, uh? Well, the respective deed enforcement, deeds, charter of the mud to enforce it for firm blood neighborhood, uh, deed enforcement is, uh, we have, and I don't know the policies of mud, uh, perhaps how they, the enforcement, uh, Stone Canyon, uh, who tried, you know, policy of, letter, fine, 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 et cetera. Yeah, that's something to be, also, uh, but it's one of the duties of, of the entity. It's kind of all of those, but, you know, it's kind of like, I think that's just, I mean, it's something to do, uh.
And, uh, Stone Canyon, what do you think you guys, you guys have some experience?
About ten years, uh, I met with most residents who were situations where we had a drought in two twenty fifteen or so. I've gotten in rear, odd fines and dues and, uh, the homeowner again, so it's, you're, you're telling the guy, water my mom. I'm, you're, you're getting fines, we've been racked up, we're trying to get a, to take care of these things. Uh, it's just telling me getting worse over the rest of the, uh, to agree with, you know, owner to, uh, get their, to make sure the chances to address, uh, both my situation and, uh, program to remedy violations and things that were encountered. And also taking into account, I think we all lose you, right? Counselor, I, I don't know where you live, but.
One brain soul.
As many of you kind are. I, I'm, I'm getting aside, I'm getting aside.
You're more of a piece of that, aren't you?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. First year of law school. Um, yeah, the law report. So, no, um, yeah, so when it comes to deed, deed enforcement, I think every, every situation is, we have a set of guidelines and rules and we, uh, we just don't, can you remember? We agreed to go by and enforce. Uh, but on, on the human side, we also had to, at least I felt, wanted to listen to, uh, the homeowner's case. And, uh, and work with them where it was required sufficiently of this owner, in the city, that answers, versus, versus other homeowners were just, well, I don't agree with your, your right to find me or to tell me that I can't have any house or a, or, uh, but all those conversations that are at, and, you know, I treat them like these bases. Uh, using our, uh, D C R S, that are guideline and at our baseline to stick to. And that's pretty much the law of the land. Like I said, a few are part of the same with cases where you make exceptions and then, okay, we'll go do it again. Uh, but even those cases where we did, if it wasn't a case of rape, you say, oh, it's going over, okay, you're fine, nevermind, sorry. So, yeah, deed enforcement is a tricky, it's a tricky business.
I, I appreciate you actually having experience. It's not something that's just a philosophical thing, you know, you didn't, you know.
Yes. The, 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 the trap in the law, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, I really appreciate you as enforcement. Bell over, questions for Mr. Long?
Chief, obviously it's pulling out the rest of the term. Um, do you think you have interest in joining this se- several terms? Or is this like, I'm just gonna plug in here and fill this one out and see where it goes?
So, thank you for the question. Uh, so I served on the Southern Canyon Board, uh, through some of the biggest, that is times. Uh, because I believe that I believe what, uh, the hiatus I took, uh, really aligned with, uh, some challenges like this right high school. And it's kind of important to have more focus on that and professional, uh, activities. Uh, no, but I believe in this task, uh, to, I, I guess, the, the, I see the other, you know, maybe I don't like you guys. Maybe I don't like Hector and Janey, maybe, maybe nine months till I can pay. But, uh, but I, 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 I'm not doing, you know, maybe, almost half of the room for a very long time. But, uh, I, 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 I'm not doing, you know, maybe, almost half of the room for a very long time, and, uh, I. If the other would have me, I, I don't see it, you know, why I want to have anything run. I, I, I ran for office, uh, back in two thousand ten, and, uh, this by, uh, thirty votes. Sorry, call, the, by my neighbor, beating this in my street, uh, threw his hat in, and he took about fifty votes. And I, I didn't know you were running, I knew you were running, I wouldn't run. Anyway. I, I go, so, thanks for asking.
So my question is, what are some things, uh? What are some things you'd like to see more on the line, and what are some things you want to see?
Um, personal list is not making this a joke. It's a reason, but, uh, again, a little work out. And Cindy and I are talking about that for, uh, a while, but it's great to talk to you, you know. But certainly. Opportunities to bring the communities together, uh, functions across the line, whether this is quite high, you don't know. Things to drive, to drive our community, it means to, you know, outside together, uh, maybe quarterly functions. All right, so we used to have like a, uh, Christmas party or whatever thing, or always season party, uh. But not necessarily tied to that, uh. I don't know if the, the mud has a social cap or budget, uh, but maybe that is something that, I don't know. The little way we can do that, uh, probably, I don't know, maybe that's not something we can do. But maybe we can leave in the period of, uh, rec, I mean, maybe Kilo K's, Molson Meadows, or, uh, organized tennis tournaments, or, uh, things like this. Things to do less of, so, but, hey, it's always a hard one, right? It's always easy if you're much like to do, it's a hundred and twenty. Yeah, I, I don't have a, 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 a stop. What happened, I'm sorry, uh. Yeah, probably a couple of meetings, some outside conversations, seeing, uh, what the board has their. Their hands in, might kind of get some of that. Meetings I did too recently, I haven't seen a lot of things that come with my board, you know, that, uh, certainly, you know. Any money to go to do this and this and whatever it is opposed to, uh, well, let's come back next month and see if we can do that. Uh, so a lot of proactive, uh, action from the board itself, uh, and finding, finding work to take place in the district for this. Uh, come back, pause, kind of, negative, uh. Yeah, fine, something comes up, which is like, now we're done, I'll, 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 thank you. Interesting question. Uh, so, again, so I've not been on, uh, the Stone Canyon Board since twenty twenty, uh, but to, uh, to that point, though, after the storm, I, and there were a lot of that, the river neighbors. Again, my, my friends who live in Austin, all these ranches, we've got a lot of parents on the way. What's gonna happen, and, you know, a lot of the. What do you mean it's gonna be, some of the forty branches are gone, uh, it's not just July, it's just everybody else. And I think that, uh, within the district, there is, the district, that the best they could respect to communicating, acting on, directing, prior recommendations, do all we can do. Working with, uh, round of refugees or, is round of refugees still right? For, uh, collections and making sure that all residents of the district were aware of the risks of pickups. And. And I think most importantly, keeping to, uh, district, to the, to, um, you know, the effort, and so, like, there are. I, I walk my house on Canyon every day, two miles from Reno branches. Last, that, that ranch is I saw picking up three weeks ago, because residents stacked on the street, yeah. Finally realized the problem, and they said, no, that's what, because that's not gonna fly. Maybe you're going to go, or maybe, you know, you're gonna be on the phone. But certainly, that doesn't happen without limitations, uh, and, uh. I, I almost wanted to say kind of. If I trust between the residents and the district, uh, and the district manager, you know, say, do this and do this, or this, or that, that. You hear it, and listen, uh, cooperate, see, see, cause of results. Jane, I don't think I've voted on this since anybody, Jane's fantastic, this manager, and, uh, fact, 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 just that, too. I mean, it does happen without good people behind it, and, uh, the director of this board showed that, and, uh, had excellent support from the, uh, district staff. I probably answered your question, I'm like, I'm sorry, but. You know, I, I've been the recipient of so many of those, I, I don't deal with that, it's nice to me.
So, you took me here, volunteer experience, besides the. Stone Canyon homeowners association, which is, you know, and, uh, you've got the sports club of America, and then you cover, you know, the additional scouts of America. What, uh, takeaways do you take from your, uh, volunteer organization, what do you learn, what, how are they rewarding you, and any.
So, uh. Yeah, it's funny, we didn't think the SCCA taught me this, but, uh. And the Boy Scouts, uh, the volunteer is really there to try to drive the boys to do what the adults would otherwise do. Uh, it's not about the, the, you know, especially the Boy Scouts, uh, not really set up for the boys, but our scouts now. To tell them what to do and to make sure they're doing it right. And trying that spirit of volunteering in the, uh, the team, if you will. Well, I know what the struggle is, especially around people doing this all come down to that, too. And, and at that level, the scouts probably didn't realize that they're volunteering, they're just fishing in, and, you know, and, uh. And when I was at Sports Club of Ameri- Sports Club of America, when we have these events, we have a, a staff of committee members who are responsible for setting up the events and taking out the events, or, you know. You guys, we're starting, we're probably tracking people, you know, hey, ready to go, help with this, and the little things, Adam, the little things I'm not doing, somebody else can do. These really, that kind of delegation of, uh, totally freeze, freeze up and grown up, that hurt, you know, almost. And potentially for, uh, organically, whatever. Yeah, what was your question?
No, it's not, not volunteer, just, what, so were your takeaways from your volunteer, meaning like what, like lessons or things that you learned from that? Or turned out to be enjoyable, or made meaningful that you didn't expect, anything like that?
Sure, and, and to take, uh, to, uh, my Stone Canyon experience, uh, working with committees, committee directors, and with the property manager, property managers. Kind of give and take with vision, direction, where we're going to go, and, uh, providing interaction through, you know, between meetings, uh, to. Guys have to, to head for some, some, uh, kind of, uh, the directors don't have to do all the work, but it's not on us to do all the work, uh, to make sure the work is. Directly heading the right, heading right, but sometimes it's, you know, lies on the director to figure out what's next and, you know, indicate some of those things. Other rewards of seeing, uh. See, seeing that we're committing to so much more work, and the work, and the more of the synergies involved through, through the cost, uh, whether it be, you know, a successful sports garden. Or a successful campout, where you take two hundred boys out, out into the woods, and everybody comes back with all their gear, and nobody, you're kind of like, uh. Only a couple of tears to, uh. You know, a neighborhood cleanup, or a food drive, or, uh, bringing, uh, new staff on a security pool. Uh, we, we have a, uh, cool kickoff with a new, with a school company, new, uh, lifeguard, kind of, get the, uh, familiar with expected, and. I have a personal pool, my house backing up, so that, uh, one of our, one of our lifeguard, our pool service lifeguard companies, uh, have, uh. We're pretty close together with bringing up some lifeguards to handle some pretty tricky, these tricky situations, uh, with, uh. Angry, uh, malignant residents, uh, who have had animal situations, and how to teach a teenager how to diffuse and probably escalate and bring up and take care of things. Knowing that there's, uh, and the managers of the school company told me, they came back this morning with me, and, uh, knowing that, uh, their, their lifeguards have dropped down, and, you know, they get back to your community, and they try. Take long enough to stop thinking about it, uh, and I, I kind of get a little more feeling about, about, you know, the Eagle Scouts, uh, who've either racked them, racked them, let them scout. But by the last fifteen years, you know, it's, uh. Just. Again, going back to your original question, why am I gonna do this? And, you know, it's so much rewarding to just watch another episode of the cycle.
Nice question, so, uh, former volunteer for SCCA, can you, this is me getting my contractor's license, I'm sitting high. It's, it's still been on top of that, I'm, I'm old, I think, this miss me, it's, you know, we want. Probably not. Uh, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a strike, I'm a, I'm a strike, that's reported application.
Knowing you, that's fine, I can't imagine how that could be exact.
Okay, so I've got kind of a follow up to, uh, this next question, and again, your SCCA, again, this absolute, you know, it's a very important question.
Yeah.
So is it MOPAR or?
Oh.
I think I have an answer to that one.
Well, it's not, it's not MOPAR, as I said, in nineteen ninety one, I swore up all my questions. So, sorry about that, uh, although I, I do appreciate what they've done on their models, past years. I have two forty five drive, uh, Chevrolet, and two Potters, uh, which I guess are all super products, so, uh.
Way towards forward.
Yeah.
That's right, wearing that ball. I, I, I love, I love my, that's why I can't get rid of my corporate, so, yeah. Sorry, I, I, I can't, I wish I could look better.
Um, do you have any current situation between your lawyer or attorney that you want to get populated with?
Actually, I thought about this, uh, my, my last question, yeah, my question, one week, so. This is not on the record, is it? So, uh, yeah, come back, uh, probably, I think, in five minutes, two or three minutes. So, no, seriously, uh. The, the only possible thing is if we were to come to any, uh, recommendations for computer hardware, for the, you know, or whatever, I certainly see. Could be useful, uh, yeah, yeah, non-automated, uh, competition matter, I can sort of provide my experience. Uh, come down to recommendations of, of models, or solutions, or whichever, and I certainly, uh. By that, do you just have a back end, none of the, the, the directors? Appreciate that, that, that's all my.
I guess the real question is, you know, can we add a bit, uh, of interest?
No, I don't have an idea.
Be a broach match. Be a hoarder.
I was just saying, I don't see a blue pitch, I think, uh, quite sure, but I would recognize, I would recognize the other ones.
Other questions? I guess they're off the hook now, uh, but I think for your interest, I know you, I just wondered also, I know you did, in defense of the, of warming interests. Appreciate your, your interest in it, here in the whole, not just, uh, the, 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 uh, and. We've got a choice in front of us, we're very, very screaming people, so, uh, if you're willing to stay, if you want to, we'll, we'll, we'll take the session, uh, we'll come back in public. Yeah, that's all.
That's right, like, like the road thing, and when, I hear something good coming up, I, I can't stay away, I'm, 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 I'm lost. Tonight, that road, because I want to take a shirt, just.
We're going to stay, if not, we're going to spend that too, because we have, uh, all the.
I'll hang on for a minute.
Uh, board of directors is authorized, uh, to take a meeting to act, meaning, well, the decision is, uh, these purposes include, uh, so, that's the first time I've said, uh, five by one point zero seven four, these taxes come into effect. So, the now meeting, the decision to do the test, uh, I mean, it is, what do you think?